Okay, I just want you to know I'm making this comment as our question as an individual, not for the committee of Florida Board of Representatives. In, I recently had inquired of a counselor, Emory, Megan Emory, about the zoning change that changed the maximum number of housing units that could be in a small lot in the southeast quadrant, a lot smaller than four acres, from four units to 1.8, which essentially means that if you had a one acre lot, you couldn't build more than one, one house. And about what was happening or whether she, where she was on reconsidering that. And she said she was fully supportive of reconsidering it. And she said that she had had a communication with Paul back in February that this would be taken up in March. So apparently that hasn't happened. So what, my question is, what needs to happen in order for the commission to, to relook at that change?
Sandy, I can report that the, that subject is one of the items that the planning commission voted to put on their work plan for this coming year. So that's the current status of it. Their recommended work plan to council that was submitted last month. So council, next month will be looking at all the policy priorities. And they make, may or may not make adjustments to it. But that was the commission's action in May.
So if the, so it would be up to the council if they wanted to ask the commission to do that sooner as opposed to later during this year, this upcoming year?
Right now, what has been provided is a proposed policy priority for next year, not structure within it. That's for, you know, that's potentially for the council to win and then ultimately for the commission to decide how to prioritize all the different things that are on their work plan that they've come up with or that others have given them, like the council.
Okay, so they could, they could make that request. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, it is always in the council's authority to make requests of the commission. I would note that this coming year, the comprehensive plan is likely to be the top priority across the board for all committees, including the commission.
Thanks, Sandy.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on items not related to the agenda? Okay, then we can move on to our first item. Any additional announcements?
I have a couple, one, but go through yourselves first.
Michael? Oh. Paul?
I have two announcements. One is that Kelsey has had her baby, a little girl named Margot, last Thursday, healthy and happy, and they were able to come home over the weekend. So that's very exciting. I have not yet seen a picture, but I'm excited to see that very soon. I will do that. Thank you, I will do that. I know that's meaningful to her. Well, so, that's the other half of it. Our zoning administrator, Delilah Hall, who's been with us for four years now, has let us know that she's going to be moving on. She moved here from New York City, in part for the challenge of this opportunity here and in part because her husband's from Vermont and lives in Bellows Falls. She was able to find a position working in rural development in the Bellows Falls area. So we're professionally very sad to see her go, but personally, of course, very, very supportive of her and her new endeavors. All of that to say that for the next short period of time, we're going to be sucking some wind in the planning and zoning department. But we've got lots of space to stretch out. So we're working to fill, fill that as quickly as we can, as well as putting into place some support for the work that you all and the climate action folks and others are going to be doing over the next little while. So stay tuned, but we're working on it.
Paul, could, on behalf of, I speak for myself, but maybe on behalf of, could you tell Delilah that we'll miss her and that we wish her well in her new endeavors?
Thank you, Michael, I will do that. I know that will be meaningful. It's a, it's a challenging job to be the zoning administrator of an evolving city, so.
When will Kelsey be out?
Three months.
Three months.
Yeah, so she'll be back, I guess, beginning of September. And, you know, we'll, we'll figure out, she may work a little bit remotely at that time. But that's, that's what she, that's her game plan at this point. Yeah.
She's a good one.
She is, we're very lucky to have her.
Yes. And I might be wrong, but I think, is this the week that last year we opened the building? Was it right around now?
It was the beginning of July, end of June, something like that, yeah. Very exciting, it feels like we've been here forever now.
It was the same.
Big memories of the other one.
One of the same date when we, we've just had the dedication of the clock. I think it was the same date.
Could be.
I know it was hellish hot.
It might have been the 24th, it was, it was around this time. Any other announcements? Okay, so we can move on to item four, which is the LDR amendments, the minor technical changes.
So I don't know if Kelsey had previewed these to you at your last meeting or not. These are some very, very minor technical things, just little cleanups that with your concurrence, we'd like to move forward in the next round, whenever you do this next round.
Any questions?
I'm comfortable, Sue, do you got that, that this is for the technical amendments? LDR 2206, I believe it is? I'll take your silence as a yes, Sue.
Yeah, couldn't find the mouse, yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
I think Andrew might have won that one. Okay, any discussion on the amendments?
A question, which doesn't necessarily apply here, but I'd like us to include the TDR ordinance, if we, in TDR chapter, in that.
That would be the purpose, yeah. This, this would be attached to whatever this next round that you do is. This would not be around in and of itself.
I guess, just one question, I don't know if it's appropriate here. I did look at the bicycle chart, I know we didn't amend it. It, it seems a little thin, maybe, like one bike per 20,000 square feet.
Well, it's only one bike per 20,000 square feet for manufacturing, which is, tends to be very, very space intensive and low employee. And that's what Kelsey was trying to clean up, is that the terms used are slightly different. So it calls it construction, it calls it one word when it's actually defined as something else. The one per 5,000 is typically what applies to most uses. The one per 20 is really supposed to be for the like warehouse industrial things only. Like Buska Moving, for example.
I mean, how many employees would you expect at a facility, not industrial, that was like 10,000 square feet? 20 employees?
Something like that.
And you have two spots. It seemed a little thin, I don't know.
I mean, certainly something we could ask the Bike Ped. The Bike Ped Committee did some work to come up with these, these proposals. We also have a indoor bicycle, secure bicycle for indoor for employees that kicks in. But if the commission would like for the Bike Ped Committee to take another.
As I read it, it just seemed to me, wow, maybe that's like an older version of ourselves. And today we'd say, maybe you need a little bit more, I don't know.
How many, how many would, facility like this?
This one's a complicated one because of this room and the library. We have a lot for this building, I'd say we have eight, 12, 20, probably about 36 pots for this building. But we probably overbuild a little bit, you know, we, we were designing for, to your point, for, we're a public building.
36 seems sufficient.
Seems enough.
Particularly with, you know, electric bikes. You know, I guess the hope is that electric bikes, people will really get into the bike culture a lot more.
Yeah, the, the big thing that changed in this last round was on the residential, when we put in standards to begin with, was on the residential side. So in multifamily buildings, every unit must have at least one bike storage in secure bike storage space, so the racks don't count. And, you know, that may or may not be meeting tomorrow's needs, but it was a substantial step over zero before. Having spoken to some residents and apartment buildings where there was, you know, a, a school yard rack under the garage that might get stolen, so.
Right, anything else or any one thing from the public on these five minor technical changes? Okay, on favor? That was unanimous, very good. So pass, and we can move on to item five, which is the transferable development rights review of the draft. So these are also draft land development regulation changes, which we've kind of looked at a couple times over, or many times over many meetings. There were a few areas that there were questions from last meeting. Is there anything in there you wanted to highlight, Paul, or questions on those items?
I think there were two items that, I think, I wasn't at the last meeting, but Kelsey passed along to me. One was a question mark of how much, how many likely PUDs are there to be in the, following the traditional neighborhood in the R7 districts? The R4, sorry, Swift R7, R7 NC and Allen Road. And Kelsey by her math and look, doing a mapping analysis, could only find one potential parcel where that would be the likely, a scenario, not likely, where it would be feasible. The second piece of it was, she, there was some discussion about whether TDRs would make sense to be used for height purposes. And so she put together a little analysis, just so that everybody's on the same page of understanding what's allowed today, and then you can have a discussion on it. So our recommendation would be to not apply TDRs in the, in the traditional neighborhood PUD, given that there's only one possible parcel, and it's a very complex tool to, to associate with that. And for height, you know, we're, we're open to a discussion. I think it was our sense that the height standards are pretty good in this area right now, and that if you'd like to have a conversation about height, that maybe it should be its own conversation and not sort of unintended, have an unintended consequence of putting really tall buildings next to neighborhoods where, you know, that there's, there's been issues in the past on that stuff, so.
Okay, this question about the first, your point about the, the PUDs, does that include the PUDs, the TND PUDs in the SEQ?
So Kelsey and I did look through that, and then she had her little baby. My recollection of the intent was that in the southeast quadrant, anything that exceeds 1.2 dwelling units per acre requires TDRs. So you are, you are, you can go as high as you'd like, as, as, as high as the traditional neighborhood PUD will allow you, but the commission's goal was to retain the system as much as the same in the southeast quadrant, to not sort of supercharge development in southeast quadrant, frankly.
Makes a lot of sense, is that what the regs say?
That we're still looking at.
Okay.
Kelsey was not 100% sure.
It wasn't clear to me when I read them.
So, yeah.
I think when I described it publicly as doing that, so if it doesn't, then we should probably revisit, you know, the idea that you'd get that base 1.2, and then above that you'd have to use TDRs, so.
We, it, it is, we, we think, we believe it's in there. It might be a little more subtle than might need to be, than, if Andrew's having a question about it, that's, that's always my cue of saying, if somebody's asking a question about it, then maybe it's not.
I mean, because it's funny how it intersects with, with the minimum density, right? And you have to pay to get to the minimum?
No, because you can, you could have your traditional neighborhood just be a very small piece of.
No, I know you can, but if it's like typically 60, 70%, right? Is it still a minimum density? Is it, maybe I'm confusing things.
Right, now, we're talking about two different tools here.
A minimum in the TNDs.
Is only minimum in the conservation PUD?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and that one, the, the TDRs reassigned from the rest of the property automatically. So we'll continue to have our, we'll have our city attorney look at that and, and triple check, but I'm confident that was the intent.
I guess I should say there's an effective minimum because there's a minimum lot size. It's, it's different, it's, it's functionally different.
You guys had gone through before I joined, I thought that was an effective minimum. Confusing things, and then if, by reason of how that operates, developers kind of required to affect, build more than 1.2 units per acre, does developer also have to pay for it by buying TDRs, right? Like, how do those things fit together?
Well, in the southeast quadrant, the traditional neighborhood is never required. So that's, that's the first thing. So if you choose to do that, then you can go down that path. But there's never, there's no circumstance in the southeast quadrant where the traditional neighborhood PUD is a requirement. The conservation PUD may be a requirement, but in other places, and in some places, you have your choice. But I think that's part of how that gets to it, is, is if you choose that tool, then you would be going down that path.
Any other questions?
I have a question, just on the clarification on the height.
Yeah.
You say in the paragraph above the chart that there's no height limit in C2 and list some other districts. I'm just wondering if you can just explain that to me.
Sure, so, um, the, in the city's commercial districts, most of them except the C1s, the height is 28 or 40 feet, unless the DRB makes a determination that a higher height is acceptable. So they have the ability to issue a waiver. So that's, that's when we say there is no maximum. There is a maximum of 28 or 40, and then the board has the authority to grant a higher one. What you did a few years ago in the C1 district was you replaced that. You said, rather than making this, that the applicant has to ask for it, and then may or may not be granted, the board, instead of having, the, the commission said, let's just say five stories is allowed, period. So you don't have to be in a guessing game about whether you're going to get it. You don't have to prove anything, you just get it. But the five is a cap, so that's, that's the difference.
But I guess, my question, like in the C2, the DRB wouldn't give somebody waivers, say, look, you can do eight stories.
So as an example, Bartlett Brook Apartments on Shelburne Road is a five-story building. So that, and that's in the C2 district. So that was granted, 40 feet is about three commercial stories. So that was granted probably a 20-foot waiver to do that, in the context there. And the, the standards of review are that it's not impacting a public view and something, I think it's sort of that it, that it fits in with the general, the rest of the site plan and its intentions.
So if, if the DRB does grant a waiver for additional height above, above 40 feet for non-residential, does the developer have to buy TDRs to get that extra height?
Today, it's a waiver authority, so it's not, there is no purchase of it. However, in my example of, let's say, the Bartlett Brook Apartments, if the result is that you are getting, that you are doing it and you're getting more units out of it, then the density would otherwise allow, then you're paying TDRs for the unit.
Because we have the, the, somewhere in the draft, we had, that you could get, you could use TDR to get additional hot, building height.
So that was a discussion point for this evening for you all. It's not in the present draft, but it is something that you could consider. I'm a little bit hesitant of it because tying two tools that work so closely together can be very tricky, will be, you know, people will be saying, well, what if, what if I make it one story shorter but 30 feet wider, and I get two units that way? It's becoming very difficult to walk applicants through, frankly, through their different options between TDRs and inclusionary units and lot coverages. It's, it's, we, we want to make sure that it's functional too. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned if we try to do both, it'll be a lot of if, thens, that.
You need a supercomputer.
So, but can we tie the waiver, if a waiver is granted, then to implement that, TDRs are required? In other words, tie them together, because otherwise we're, based on what research that you and Kelsey have done, we've got some severe limitations on, on the market for TDRs. Based on what.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that if the height results in additional dwelling units, then they're paying for the TDRs in that way, in the density. It doesn't mean that it'll happen in every case. But again, you know, using Bartlett Brook Apartments as, as an example, it's a very large sort of L-shaped parcel. They use their entire density for that building. Had they wanted to put more housing, say, where the Secon Bank would have been, there was no more density allowed. So they might have done more on that property, but they ran out of density. But this, this is your discussion to have about what tools you'd like to employ.
So Michael, are you saying that just buying for the extra units isn't enough? You want somebody to purchase both for height and the extra units? Because we're, we're kind of allowing them to have the extra height. They don't have to pay for that, like they just get it with this waiver, or, you know, this certain.
The TDRs kick in at the density.
Yeah, but then if they add that extra floor, which the regulations already let them do in some cases, then they have to buy the TDRs to put in that floor, you know, to get the density to fill it up.
What would be the, if you did go with extra height, wouldn't you automatically, I mean, you just wouldn't have height without additional units, right? Unless you made the bigger.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the question, like, would you be asking them to buy for both height and then also the units to go into that extra height?
I guess, Paul, is, is there a scenario like Ted mentioned where they would buy two extra, or they get two more floors, but they're not increasing the density? They would just make much bigger units?
Well, they could make three-bedroom units, or, right, presumably, right?
Yeah, I mean, or they could, they could put commercial on the first three floors and something above it. Or, you know, if, if, if they could, and I, I don't want to be extremist, but they could build a larger parking lot around it to build a taller building. You know, that doesn't necessarily result in good design. They could just be taller because it's cheaper to build up than out. And so they build a sort of tall building, sort of like, you know, like a deck or place kind of thing.
In the draft, sorry, Paul, we said, density increases on a receiving property may include an increase in lot coverage, building coverage, or allowed residential density. We originally had not building coverage, which I'm assuming means the footprint. We had building bulk, which could be either footprint or extra height. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't go back to that, or why we changed it.
Well, how much more complicated would it be if the only thing was to grant a waiver? The developer needs to buy a TDR too, is that?
Well, I guess, I guess, to me, the question, so, so there's two questions of complexity. One is, it's the talking people through, do you want to be doing, do you want to be buying TDRs to do more height? Do you want a squatter building that has more units? Am I paying for the TDR because it's taller, because it's more units? It, it, they're overlapping a little bit. I think the other part to me that's tricky is, what are you paying for in height? If you have a very large building, is it the same thing that you're paying for as, as a very small building to go height-wise? You know, let's say you had a, a, you know, a 100-unit, 200-foot-long building versus a 20-foot-long building? And is it stories or feet?
Well, I mean, the statute, the statute talks about bulk. So you'd probably have to define it that way, like the footprint times the story for your 10 feet, and you pay for the, pay for the bulk.
That, that would be floor area ratio, is that's, that's what that is. We don't currently regulate by that, so that would mean that we need to, to, to create a structure to do that?
I think that's going to be necessary if you want to use building bulk.
I think the question is, who wants to use building bulk? Like, is that what somebody or multiple people here are asking to have in here?
Well, building bulk could mean an additional floor of so and so many square feet.
Oh, I know what it means. I'm asking if anybody wants that, like, I'm not asking for that. Is somebody?
Yeah, no.
I'm trying to get a sense of the, you know.
I am, because we felt, we did establish that, at least in one case, a developer would have added a story if he could do it with TDRs and could comply with all the other rigs.
But would he have needed a TDR to get the height?
Well, he might have got a waiver and gone, you know, above the five, five stories, gone to six. He could have asked the DRB for a waiver. But one of the targets of our, to, to, to reach, increase the market for TDRs was to look for those kinds of opportunities where, and it wouldn't have to go through the DRB. They could submit their plan and tell the DRB, we're going to use TDRs to do X, which we have to do now anyway. Anybody who wants to use TDRs has to get the agreement of the DRB anyway. Am I right, Paul?
Well, basically, any project outside of the city center form-based code of that scale would need DRB review and approval anyway. And anything that uses TDRs needs DRB approval.
I, I guess, the question on my mind is, is the complexity. If it's, if it's not that complex, it seems like a good way to use the TDR. If it's going to be overly complex and just like bog everyone down and no, no one's going to understand it, then it's not such a great use. And I'm wondering if it's, if it is that complex. I mean, what if it just said something like, you know, developer wants to get a waiver, has to buy at least one TDR? And the formula could be, you know, the, the additional building bulk, call it, you know, figure 10 feet per story times the, the floor coverage divided by, I don't know, 3,000 minimum of one. Which is, you know, so like 30 by 100 times a story, you got to buy a TDR. And 60 by 100, you got to buy two. And just like come up with something, is it, is that really that hard to administer?
I think the difficulty, and, you know, I think that, that's, I, I think that that would be a reasonable way of doing it if it were about height. I think the difficulty is that oftentimes developers are coming in not with a game plan, but with a, how do I best achieve what I'm trying to do? And so there's a lot of if, thens. What if I did 11 inclusionary units? Well, what if I make it 12 and I get a bonus unit that way? And then I buy a TDR, what if I add a height? It becomes a very.
No, 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 I know, Paul, but that, that decision tree presumably is already there in the sense that, and what if I ask for a waiver, what if I don't ask for a waiver? And so they're already decisioning all that out, and all we're saying now, okay, if he asks for a waiver, you'll have to pay a little bit. I mean, it doesn't make that decision tree more complex.
My, my question is, back to what you said earlier, Paul, i- if they're having to, to get a TDR to get that extra density that that extra floor gives them from a waiver, where they're already getting that, they're using a TDR.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are a number of applicants today who are using, are requesting height waivers in order to achieve the density that's allowed today. You know, the, the R12 district is 12 units an acre. It's difficult to do that in 28 feet. So oftentimes, we're getting requests today already. So, you know, on the one hand, that does present a market. On the other hand, you know, everything here is a tricky balance of what you're trying to achieve in terms of, are you trying to foster those areas to be built or not? Because if you give it today for free, but now you're charging for it tomorrow, that is, it has the benefit of using TDRs, but the drawback of it's another cost on a project.
Yeah, but we do have a kind of, not legal, moral obligation to the holders of TDR, to the owners of TDRs to, to. To to make it, make them as marketable as possible. I mean, that they gave up something in the expectation that they would be able to sell the TDRs. And if we restricted restrict to places where we where they can be used. Uh, we're not doing them a good service for what they gave up. So we should. Yeah, they they. Well, you're right, Paul, they would have to pay for something that they might now be getting for free. From a DRB waiver.
And I mean, it's interesting dynamic, right? Someone who. Would have to pay for additional floor may just decide to build a lot of smaller units. And not build up and like, I don't know, we want to encourage that either. We we talked about having. You know, a requirement that maybe you have some two bedrooms and three bedrooms, which I think makes a lot of sense. So it does, it does, it it could push you to having small units, right? To maximize a density in a smaller building, I guess. If the developer has to pay for the additional floor, so it's actually a lot of dynamics here.
Yeah, I guess not to sidetrack too much, but you referred to something that we talked about and then I didn't see it in here. Did we actually include that requirement to have a mix of? Bedroom types? It's not in there.
It's in the, there is a, there is a requirement in the inclusionary zoning. That inclusionary units have to be this of the same. Number of bedrooms as of as market rate ones and that applies citywide, but there's not a. Scale of um, bedrooms proposed as part of this at this time. That was not actually given to us.
Did that get added to our work plan with the? Is that what we did then?
Don't believe you gave us any guidance on it. You talked about it, but I don't believe there's any guidance um, that. Um, of what of advancing it.
I thought my perspective would be to defer right now consideration of the the height and take that up. Together with. This other question of different sized units and buildings and how all those things interact and. We can always expand the TR marketplace again, you know, after this round. I think there's a lot of questions here, Michael. I don't know, kinda.
We're not scheduling the public meeting until we say September. For for.
August, I think he said the first week.
And I think the idea was to get feedback. You know, from. Developers and other people in the market. So I don't know that that might be a good place. I don't know if there's. Anyone you can touch base on that that might have some insight into that.
Yes, I kind of agree with what Andrew is saying. The height and the bulk, like we don't, we don't currently regulate for bulk. And we want to have them buy for extra height and extra units. I don't know, it feels like.
I think for what it's worth, you took sort of a similar approach on deciding whether TDRs would be worth one or two or three units to. Put it out there, have this be the first time that TDRs are used and see how the market responds a little bit um, to it, but.
Yeah, but in a in a similar vein, we did agree that you could buy lot coverage. With TDRs. I mean, increased increase in lot coverage.
Yes, that's in there. That seems.
So if you want an increase in. Building, building bulk can, as Paul says, can go out or up. Um, and can be measured. And I think, and we would have to decide, as we said, one TDR buys you ten thousand square feet of lot coverage. Um, one TDR buys you X square feet of. Building. Buck.
Cubic.
Pardon?
Cubic. Feet. Cubic feet.
Volume.
I mean, maybe it's something that we should leave you uh, without Kelsey. To work on, Paul. You've got nothing else to do.
Dump this on.
Have your staff work on.
Well, I think staff has recommended we don't include height as a separate thing you buy separately. You know, you can, you can still get your height. Through all these things, these other mechanisms. And then you buy the units to go into it.
So it seems like the TDRs will get used. Most times they would go for additional height, that that was my concern is we're still generating a market for TDRs. Yes, I would say that um, some of the districts are not entirely right sized currently in there. So our our standards for height are the same other than city center across the entire city, basically. And our densities are very different. So we have in some districts like the R twelve, twelve units an acre where we've sort of. Really pushed people through the density today to be asking for height waivers. And we have other districts where it's really not as much of an issue, like, you know, the the R seven doesn't see it as often because it's seven units an acre. The place where you will likely see this happening more will be in places. Um, in the in those lower density districts, because now they have the opportunity to buy more density, they might see more opportunity to get height. Um, whereas the higher density ones, they they they're they're already asking for height. Um, I don't know, you've got ton, you don't have too too many more in the R twelve parcels anyway, but.
Yeah, but as you in in R two, R four. It would.
Yes, but today that doesn't apply. The TDRs don't apply to the to the.
That is a problem we will come to in your course, I guess.
Right, um. Other thoughts on what's in the draft?
The nineteen oh four, the determination of transferable development rights, it's on page thirty one. About the recording system. I made a note that we should add easements to the documentation that needs to be recorded. And that these records.
Well, anything that's recorded is in the clerk's office and. So that is, that's a question with the city clerk about how to access recorded documents.
So is the city clerk gonna be? Right, is the city clerk gonna be responsible for this recording system that the city has to establish under this?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw recording system. So recording is a legal term in 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 one sense that. That's where the final documentation. So recording would be, yes, we would maintain a system for having that be. Have its final resting place in the clerk's office. And um. And the rest of it is is what's required under state law for us to do in a TDR program.
But does that mean that somebody who wants to look at these or find something would have to go to the land records in the clerk's office? Or will?
I'm saying that's the minimum.
Because when we were talking about the TDRs in general, we also talked about having a a register of. Of TDRs that are available. To be sold. Um, obviously, it would be voluntary for the owner to list them. Where would that be?
So that would not be a regulatory tool in that instance, that would be a a essentially an administrative tool. Um, we have discussed that that is something that could be made available for folks um, via a website. Um, it just has to make its way to the. To the top of the pile of um, of projects.
I speak for myself. I found it extremely difficult, in some cases almost impossible, to find the easements that are related. To the T to TDR sales. Um, I don't, I wouldn't know how to do it. That's why I made this comment that we should add the easements in this. Um, system of recording and monitoring. In one place, otherwise you have to go to every single. La- landowners, land use, I mean, into the records to to look for every transaction independently.
We can certainly look into that as an administrative task. Legal requirement is that it be with the land records for that property. I hear what you're saying. Um, that's an administrative task for us to figure out if there's a way to do that more.
But those records then should include the include the easement. In that.
You, do you mean easement? Cause I don't think we're getting like the right to go and like use that, like walk around.
It's just not a public easement.
Oh, okay. So you do mean the word easement, just not for us to go. Walk around there, but just to understand who.
Right, it's a, I think it's technically called technically called a density reduction easement. It's just not a public easement.
Okay.
And and it's it's a perpetual one.
Yeah.
Well, the statute does say municipality shall maintain a map of areas from which development rights have been severed.
Yep.
That that too.
Right, do do we maintain that?
Uh, we do maintain it, yes.
Oh, so that will tell you where the easements are, that that map.
The from where they've been severed, yes.
Oh, isn't that what Michael's asking about? The city has a map.
If there's a map that covers all of that, um.
Where's it located?
What's that?
The map.
Where is it located? Well. It's, we keep it, it's not, it's not posted to our website. We have it sort of deep in our files and we update it as. As needed, it's not a very sexy looking map. It's a map that says, you know, look at book forty three, page seventeen.
Yeah, okay, that's that's the 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 problem. It's not not user friendly, put it that way.
I will put that on the list of administrative tasks.
Okay.
I'm just being mindful that, you know, we don't presently have GIS staff for the city. So everything that we do is outsourcing to somebody else to do these things. So that's. We're we're growing pains of a growing city. But yes, I've here, I hear the concern and I concur that having a better way for people to access and know who wants to sell and what's been sold. The.
And the terms of the easement. Yeah. I had another couple of questions if nobody else has those in between. In the, in the tables we have of um. Uses and dimensional standards. In order to. How can I put this? Let's take R one, for example. It's an acre and one. But if you had, if you wanted to increase density, if you own an R one property and you wanted to increase the density. You could. Use TDR to buy up to. Uh, ten thousand square feet, one of four rather. Or fourteen thousand square feet, three units.
Well, presently in the draft, the R one, the R two and the R four district are not included.
I know.
Okay.
Why can't we include them?
Well, you had decided last winter to not include.
I.
These low density districts.
Yes.
Has the issue, frankly, I think that the issue becomes one of buying one TDR at a time is a massively complicated issue for folks. And if you're looking at doing infill in lower density districts. It's going to be mom and pop people doing one at a time and the legal costs are going to be equivalent to their TDR purchase costs. So I think it's a different issue than somebody buying ten or fifteen or twenty at a time, I think is fundamentally the issue. And then from a neighborhood perspective, changing the density in the neighborhoods is an important topic, but not one to be taken. As a as a quick fix pro topic, that's going to be bringing a lot of people out very mad.
Right, because we intentionally limited to density to the trans over lay district and. Yeah, I guess some commercial area, right? I mean, we.
I think it's a very worthwhile discussion to have in those areas, but it should not be taken lightly without.
Um, I'm asking that this is something that we we should look at. The same applies to R two and R four. Uh, I have the same. Question. Because that would make. TDRs easier to sell or or at least expand the market if that was possible. I know that it's difficult. I'm not sure about the the one at a time legal cost, Paul, because I know uh, the one that we do know was sold. I think the legal costs were in the range of two, two and a half thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it was a first. So I'll leave it at that, but those are, those are questions I had.
Right, anybody else have anything?
Um, Paul, do you have just a hand? How many TDRs have been sold and how many are being used?
Michael, do you happen to recall um, from the report? Um, I can.
Fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
Was it number roughly?
Of which.
Outstanding, that's the number. I remember fourteen hundred outstanding.
Fourteen hundred already sold?
Outstanding.
Aren't sold yet.
Yeah.
I have to go back to the. Uh, but I could go back to the PowerPoint and look for it.
My my recollection, Paul, was that um, the number of TDRs that have been sold as actual TDRs is pretty low. It's in, it's probably in single uh, double digits, so under a hundred. However. Many more than that, I would say, I want to say it was about six hundred, Michael, have been. Um, used by the reassignment within a property. So South Village used the entire density of all of South Village to build on twenty percent of the property. They used, they essentially transferred those TDRs. It's just an internal transfer, so it's a reassignment of density rather than than a. TDR. So when we did the report, we we tried to account for both of those because technically. They're not TDRs, but functionally they are. And I want to say that there's been about six or seven hundred total used. Of which less than a hundred are formerly TDRs. May- maybe a little bit more than a hundred, because there's been. Sixty with cider mill two. Uh. What's a a twenty or so with? No, that's probably about right, twenty with with rye. South Point was an internal one.
Yep.
The ones that have actually used TDRs were cider mill two, which is now Edgewood. The rye neighborhood just north of Oak Creek Village and eventually Spear Meadows will use some.
Yeah.
Um, the rest have been internal transfers.
So the Dukes, the Dukes uh. TDR for Spear Meadow, you know?
Uh, I don't know if they if they haven't had to formally sell them yet. Um, it's coming up as soon as they get to a certain number of points. That was who they, the Duke slash Vermont Land Trust was who they had an option agreement with.
Yeah.
If in the end they select somebody else, they could legally do that. So I'm not, I'm not sure if they chose them in the end.
Okay, any um, thoughts or comments from the public? Okay, then are we ready for our motion? Oh, which I guess means moving on to item six, maybe?
So um.
We're ready.
The I spoke with the city attorney and I know you've talked about early August. Um, the city attorney would be also prepared to have the legal review completed by August ninth. Or for your August ninth meeting, if you wanted to have it on that date.
Well, that is the night of the uh, election. You may not want to do that on a like. Election night.
Public hearing on election night.
That is not a good idea.
Uh, so the next one after that would be your, unless you did a special meeting on the twenty fourth. Uh, sorry, twenty third.
I will be on vacation, but you are welcome to go ahead without me if you want.
Away from the twelfth of August until the sixteenth of December, uh, of September. A month roughly.
Which month are you?
August, so is the last week of August, yeah, twenty third.
Um, so you're down two people that day. Um, you could alternatively move that meeting to the thirtieth. It's a five Tuesday month. If you wanted and do it on that day or. I don't want to kick this out indefinitely. It's not a uh, it's not an urgent one, but I know that you want to get this off the books and move on to other important projects, so.
Yeah, or um is there is there a reason to? If August ninth is an election night, is there a reason to? Move our meeting to the next night so that we're not on an election night? I don't know. I know in the past, we've had some people who worked the election, which I don't think is the case with this current group.
You could potentially have it on Monday, the eighth. I'm gonna be out of town for a few days, starting on the tenth and Kelsey won't be back yet, so. But if you want to do on the Monday, the eighth, that would work. That's not a council night.
Run with election and polls close itself.
Yeah, I know in the past, we've had some members and some members of the public who actually did the counting. Um, so they were unavailable in the evening, but like I said, I don't know that there's.
Think specifically that it's a public hearing, if it was a regular meeting, I would say that's. But the fact that you're specifically supposed to be a public hearing, I think might be a little tricky.
I think the eighth is the eighth is fine. Monday, the eighth is fine with me. I don't. To avoid the election. I don't know if people have Monday.
It's not. It's an off week for them.
At the time this was presented, there were thirteen hundred and fifty-seven remaining TDRs and five hundred and eighty-four had been sold.
Give us credit for pretty good memories, Michael. That was that was pretty good as guesses and Andrew.
Okay, it sounds like that whole week is out for, are you okay with us moving ahead? Are you okay with us moving ahead? Yeah, on the week of the eighth, or do you want to try to pick a different week?
Well, he's got some week in the summer when they're not gonna be around. Or hopefully two or three.
Okay, well, I guess if somebody wants to make a motion and pick a day, you can go ahead.
The motion would be to uh. Submit uh the. TDR amendments, LDR twenty-two oh five. As well as the ones that you just approved earlier, twenty-two oh six and the accompanying report for a public hearing, possibly on Monday. August eighth.
Amen that motion to include. Additional clarifying language, if any, that's needed to ensure that within the SEQ. The PUDs need to buy TDRs above the base density. Maybe it's not needed, but just to include that in this package if it's needed.
Yes, so what I can do is I can make sure that the section is warned. And if there's an a change that needs to happen, you could then do it um on or after that night. Tonight, you have to pick the the language that's gonna go to the public hearing, but we can make sure that the warning. Covers the possibility that that would be um adjusted also. And then then you're legally free to do it at that time.
So what are we going to add as a consequence of discussion we've just had, add to this draft?
I don't have any changes at this time, but you haven't made a motion, so. Nobody's made a motion yet.
Can this be in September rather than August, or is that too late?
As you choose, there's.
Everybody who would attend the hearing is probably gonna be on vacation in August, too.
We, I mean, it's up to us.
Labor Day is the fifth.
Yep, so your regular meetings are the thirteenth and twenty-seventh of that month. He not gonna be around. Swing and a miss.
So. Do I need to make a motion to add? Easements where it says here, the city shall establish and maintain a system for recording and monitoring. The severance ownership. And and then easements and receipt of transferable derivative rights. Do I have to make a motion for that?
I think Paul was gonna say about.
I mean, you were gonna make it administrative.
Yeah, and Michael, I can make that, I can pose that question to the city attorney, but whether it's covering or anything, my sense is that I'm not an attorney, but my sense is that covers. All of those instruments, um but I'm not an attorney, so I will.
The administrative. Listing and maintaining of that list would be more important, I think. So. I won't make any motion about it. So I've made my comment.
Oh, and um let me correct myself. Your meeting dates. You've actually already moved your meeting to August tenth, um which is problematic, because I didn't realize that. And your September second meeting is actually, the second meeting of September is the twenty-eighth because um. The twenty-seventh is the second day of Russia shot. So this is our first year of making sure that we're attentive to all those things, so I apologize.
Okay, so it sounds like we have to move the meeting on the tenth anyway.
Yep.
It's it's not the seventh, it's not the twenty-seventh, it's twenty-eighth of September.
Correct.
I'll be here for that.
Great. So you could do it on August eighth, Monday, or in September, it sounds like are your two choices.
And our scheduled meeting in September is the thirteenth.
Thirteenth and twenty-eighth.
Um, okay, well, I mean, it'd be nice to move things along.
Okay. Okay. Where's Monica to make a motion when she's?
What motion do you need?
Okay, I can try to do it here. Um, I move to. Approve the planning commission report and to warn a public hearing. For Monday, August eighth. On the draft amendments to land development regulations, including in this meeting's packet. Um, which include both.
It's LDR twenty-two oh five and LDR twenty-two oh six.
As stated by Paul. That's it. Great.
And to add clarifying language.
And to add clarifying language on um the SEQ TDRs.
TNDs.
TNDs within TDRs, uh TDRs within TNDs.
That's what I said. I mean, we can continue to have a different discussion about the date if somebody, I mean, you're. Pushing for a different date. Yes, we're gonna do it on Monday, August eighth is what's in the the motion, um so we're not conflicting with the election evening. Right, any um any public comment or discussion? Or anyone up here? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so um all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And that is unanimous, very good. So um we will get. Monday, August eighth on our calendar and warned for our hearing. Okay, so next up, we have comprehensive plan, looking at the structure of it.
Yes, so two uh two goals for this evening, and I can also, if you, if we have time at the end, give you a little update on um. Uh, some thoughts we've had around your um feedback on public input from the last meeting. So um. On structure, so this is. This is not the final, final version, but it's trying to sort of, you know, as we get further into this, making sure that we're organizing things correctly. This is the existing one. Up on the screen, and then I'm gonna jump down to the proposed one. And there's a couple of things that we've um that we're proposing to change as stated in the memo. One is, we're trying to make this a little. Less um bureaucratic and a little bit more about. People, so it's instead of blue infrastructure and social infrastructure, it's. Uh, community, land resources, things that that maybe say something a little more um direct. And then added sections in here would be about building community, which the terminology isn't quite right, but it's about. It's about sort of more than just the sum of the parts of um a regulatory scheme. It's about. People being connected to people, about this place becoming a more and more place that, you know, it's just a wonderful place to live for all the reasons that it is. Uh, equity. And then um. What was the other one that we proposed? Oh, and then um forest blocks and habitat, which is a new requirement under state law. So those are really the the three that are proposed to be. More specifically added. And then, as you talked about in your last few meetings, the emphasis and the subject areas of. Uh, areas like climate change are gonna be sort of front and center, weave through this whole thing, so not. Um, the guidance you gave us in March was to not call it out as its own chapter. But um that's up to you guys. If you feel like it should be woven through and be specifically called out as a chapter.
I had a couple, made myself a couple of notes on this page and uh. Community, and then they may tie into what Paul just said. First of all. On the bottom sentence, the most significant proposed change, the the most, that's not right, the most significant proposed change must be to orient the plan towards. Climate change mitigation above all else. And then under the community assessment, I made a note to add sustainability or climate change mitigation. And under land resources to add resilience. Uh, D, add resilience somewhere in there. Now I see further on that there's reference to. Climate change mitigation. In other places, but um. It's listed as a key topic, for example. And uh. So the next page, I think, yeah. Other than that. Structure looks interesting. I didn't have any.
The only other thing I'll I'll say about structure is knowing that there are some very important key subjects to focus on over the next year. We're trying to not rebuild every part of the plan in the areas that don't need to be completely rebuilt. They were all redone in twenty sixteen, so there may be some areas. Like resource extraction, which is a required element under state law that we don't, it says very little, we don't need to change it, we don't need to spend hours. Redebating a subject that is a tiny fraction of what we do and instead can focus on the things that are really. Of consequence to the future of the community. That's that's part of why the structure isn't just totally rearranged.
Ted?
I'm not quite sure where. Um, the topic should be, you know, what category, but I'm thinking of uh an example, you know, for instance, Country Club Estates and. Stone House, you know, on off Van Sicklin Road. You know, how to bring those into the city, how to connect those neighborhoods and also Bartlett Bay or anything west of. Of uh Route seven, you know, we still have. Um, neighborhoods that are disconnected and. It'd be nice to be able to figure out. I mean, we're we're doing the the bike path over the over the interstate. That's great. There's a there's a terrific connection there, but. Uh, we haven't addressed uh Van Sicklin Road. They're sort of out there. We're sick, we're. Haven't addressed um Country Club Estates. They probably don't want to be connected, but. We're happy to thank you very much, but so that's, you know, I don't know how we. Put that into the context of the discussion.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Ted, and you know, mine actually fit within multiple of these categories and and.
Yeah, kind of to build on what Ted said, when I was looking at the uh. That the the prior version and this version, the one word that I didn't see was neighborhood.
Yeah.
It seemed to me like it should be in there somewhere.
Yep.
You know, and and the the other point I want to make on that, and you alluded to it earlier, Paul, and I I don't know. How and when we're gonna handle it, but what you alluded to earlier about infill in. You know, neighborhoods, R one neighborhoods, R two neighborhoods, um yes, that that's a very sticky topic, uh but I think it's one that. We probably need to start to address. As we talk about, you know, adding density in places that are already built up as opposed to greenfields. Um, you know, I don't know where or. Where where it could be listed or how addressed, but I think we we need to think about that.
So two thoughts on that. One, um I, the the place, the currently the best place for that to live would be in the future land use. About what is it? So we we divide the city into different areas. They would say, what what are we trying to achieve with that? I think. Maybe there's some cross cutting things that we can talk about neighborhoods in general. The other one, um last meeting, you gave Kelsey some feedback on the the one page sort of overarching. Visioning goals. We've been toying with that a little bit so that when you have your joint meeting with council. We can. Um, help facilitate a uh a dialogue on how how to say these vision and goals more clearly, and one of them is. On that subject of what are what are we trying to do? What is the city trying to achieve in its neighborhoods? So I think that's a place where you can say it right up front, right alongside the. Key subject areas of climate change and, you know, instead of saying something like walkable, saying something that. Is more meaningful as to what we're trying to achieve in the built environment, like connected neighborhoods, things like that. Um, pedestrian connected neighborhoods, things like that.
Jessica. I um. Well, you know, I just finished the um. The rezoning task force and the. Obviously, the Chamberlain Neighborhood was a huge part of that. And especially the document that they had from twenty sixteen, which missed getting in the in the. Twenty sixteen plan by a couple months. And so they're still hoping that that will be a big part of the plan that we'll be writing, so. Like to see that someplace, but I also would like to see. More than the just the Chamberlain Neighborhood, but as Duncan was saying, all the neighborhoods, you know, I would like to. Adena, I'd like us to identify what the neighborhoods are in the city. And what the characteristics are of those neighborhoods. You know, there there are some very distinct neighborhoods. And uh. I think would be a good idea in the plan, in the comprehensive plan to acknowledge that and uh. That's really what our city is built of. It's built in neighborhoods, really. Other than, you know, Chauvin Road and Williston Road. And then we really do need to give the Chamberlain Neighborhood its due. They've waited for a long time. They could be a part of that kind of discussion.
Could we just flip back to the prior? Page with the reorganized topics.
Yes.
So I I don't know, I I guess um I'm thinking that two D land resources is is too narrow. A category. And I guess I wasn't here for the conversation where we agreed to not. Highlight climate change and I'm certainly fully supportive of weaving it throughout, but I think it's important enough to also call out. And I don't know, I would maybe think D should be. Ecosystems and climate change, something like that, because then we can include, you know, that naturally then includes the water resources and. Air and and land, right? Not just not just land, oops. Um, and then we can include under there. I think uh. Topics like. Transitioning off of fossil fuels. I think it needs, I think it should be called out separately and it could be woven throughout where appropriate. Um, but that's that's a really, really important item that I think deserves its own section.
Um, there were two words that I missed that you said, Andrew. One was change D to ecosystems and you had another word associated with it.
Well, I I again, I I'm not, I I. I would throw out ecosystems and climate change, but we can, I I just thought land resources was 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 a little narrow.
Yep, um and then you said call out climate change and then you had another term about.
I had.
Something like energy transition.
Well, transitioning away from fossil fuels.
And then, Michael, I think I missed a couple of years.
Yeah, just under community assessments and strategies, I said add sustainability or climate change mitigation.
I'm trying to recall the conversation we had about. Not creating a separate category for climate change, but. Calling it out in in the introduction vision and goals and obviously having it weave throughout the plan. I'm trying to be called. What was the, what was the genesis for that as opposed to giving it its own? Don't remember what was the.
From my perspective, you know, as someone who's not as. Brained in it as as you on the committees is the. Brained in it as you on the committees is the, you know, I look through this list of all these different things and I think about. Like climate change with transportation and climate change with utilities and climate change with energy. I don't know about resource extraction, but like, you know, I just feel like almost every single one of these climate change with, you know. Most of the items under land resources, like it feels like it's a. Like it's a specific piece of like every single one of these. Or maybe not every single, but like almost all of the other chapters. So like if we. Pull out like a separate. Like under the. Climate change and we talk a little tiny bit about transportation there. Like, how is it linked back to our bigger transportation plan? Like, I guess I would just, I just feel like it's so important to like link that.
I wasn't thinking that, Jessica. I guess I was thinking indeed you'd have some broader. Goal, like I said, transitioning off of fossil fuels. Why? Why is it important to the community? What are our goals? And then. How you do that is woven throughout and all the different sections you're talking about, but I think it's. Important to call that up as a separate section as to what and why. And I think what you're talking about is the how.
Do you think that that should really be at? Right up front, like actually section E under introduction? Like. Or somewhere in there, like in the introduction to say like, this is so important to us. And there's these kind of. Bigger goals and you're going to see strategies and specifics within all the rest of the sections like.
I'm almost wondering if what maybe the thing to do is to take this one A vision and goals, get your one pager, but then to elaborate a little bit. On these, whatever you come up with, three or four major things being. Affordable and equitable being. Achieving, you know, meeting climate change goals and then whatever maybe two others that you've got and elaborate on them and say. This is what we now, this is explained in the subject. This is why it's important. And this is then why it gets we through everything that follows in the next. Hundred and fifty pages. Rather than. And then maybe there are some areas. Whether we're talking about resiliency, Michael, or we're talking about. Specifically transitions from fuels, which might be sort of a topic area. That that get. Called out within within an area as, you know, something that maybe we. There isn't a natural place for it now that we pull it out and put it.
I just don't want it to be like hidden in the list of somewhere at the bottom. Like it feels like. I'm hearing so much about it. It feels like it needs to be in the front and then throughout. So you don't miss.
I think I would still rename D, maybe then ecosystems or something.
Yeah, these are.
Yeah, I agree. I think land resources is maybe not the word.
Still a little technocratic, so.
It could be like resources just in general, or it could be like you said, something maybe a little more.
I think that's actually. Thank you for that, Jessica. I was trying to remember the rationale me and that conversation, but I think that makes sense to. Put it maybe up somewhere up in the introduction and just to call out the importance of it and let it let people know that it touches just about everything in the plan. In some facet or another. I think that that gives it more. Graphtus. As to what it really is.
Paul, just at the bottom, there should be call out. Climate change and transitions away from fossil fuels. Not form. But Andrew. Under D. Change D to and then call out call out. Down the bottom of the page.
Right here, under.
You've written, you've already written it. You just need to fix the grammar.
Oh, okay. Change call, oh, call out. Sorry about that. Just wanted me to say the word out as a Canadian, didn't you?
Yeah. A. And from fossil fuels, not form.
This is why I usually hide the screen when I'm making notes.
Oh, could you note to the Chamberlain Neighborhood and?
Yes, so that's why I jumped over to the other page. So your notes here, Paul. On the key topic. So I did call out in the third bullet Chamberlain Neighborhood and its interface with the airport. And then I added your note. Identify neighborhoods in the city and what are their characteristics as more broadly than just. Just that.
Do you think this would be the spot to add Ted and what Duncan and Ted were both talking about with the disconnected neighborhoods too? So not only identifying them, but also. Maybe ways to connect them better. Would that go?
I wonder if we can add that on the prior page, like we have that. The very one that Paul was calling out, building community. What if we call that community and connections or something?
Neighborhood would have fit there.
Yeah, right. Building, you know.
I think Paul Engels was right. I mean, that's a huge part of our cities, the neighborhoods and the characters that they. Provide.
Connecting communities under something.
Yeah, I think. My hope with that first one was to be at least in part moving away from the physical community, but I think in this case it is also about. The physical community of connecting, but I don't want to lose the part of, you know, the library is about. Community connections also, but it's social connections instead of physical. So maybe that is the way to describe it.
The civic and the civil.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, speaking of the civil, which I know is dear to my heart, do you think we need something like that under built infrastructure? Like we have transportation and energy, but do we need like? Something that's more about the core of our. Like what we want to see in our city that's not just about the transportation and energy. Like the social infrastructure, like something like that. I don't, I don't know. It's just kind of crazy thought, but.
Well, I think that's that's the subject of B is really more oriented towards the people. And C is really more about the physical things that support it. Transportation, utilities, energy.
But is there a physical thing that needs to support? Like the placemaking, like.
Natural green space.
Placemaking. I don't, I don't know.
Public green space, public. Under you, rather than just utilities.
Yeah, and I might move recreation resources is currently under land resources, but I think if we change that ecosystems and working land, it might make sense to move recreation over to being. Part of our built. Infrastructure or however we describe it. I think a common theme that I'm hearing tonight is. A, you know. Well, basically have the wording not just be topics, but. But intentional words of what we mean by those topics. Not just land, but ecosystems, not just. Community, but community and connections like so we can, words can can mean something in a plan as and together can say something. When I worked on the, in the town of very small town of Tinmouth, they organized their plan sort of in the the. The first person. So instead of a section on housing, they had, how do we house our neighbors? So it was, it was, was, you know, how do we take care of our neighbors was the whole like theme of the plan? I think that's a little bit small town for the needs here, but I think we can still maybe take some. Lessons from it and say, let's be intentional when we say it's not just transportation, it's community connections. It's not a, it's not a theoretical thing. It's about connecting us to ourselves.
What is some resource extraction? What's the definition of that?
In South Burlington, that means gravel pits.
Oh.
Yeah.
Maple syrup.
Two. Well, one operating, one no longer operating. The one down just south of the interstate that accesses into Williston.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a required element that you must have a plan for what you're doing with with mineral extraction.
So that's part of that's in South Burlington.
The whole things in South Burlington, but the access roads in Williston.
Yeah. No, yeah.
Yeah.
Other, other comments. I mean, we're kind of transitioning from just this. Table of contents of you into the. Key topics here. There's anything else.
So my purpose in this one, if you're ready to move on, was to make sure that as we're scheduling out the next year or so. That. Big outsized areas of discussion. That you will want to make sure that you spend time on and that we put resources towards that. Obviously, the public may bring up new things that we haven't thought of, but. As best we can, what are the, what are the big things that the 2024 plan are going to be? Where are you going to be spending your time? So. This is what I've come up with so far, based on what we've. Heard from you over the. Past few months and just wanted to do a gut check on it.
No, I don't. Who assigns the different committees, you know, like the natural resources committee and affordable housing committee and so on, a task. So their work, their, all these committees are working on these parts that then fun, do you or does Jessica or?
We will. So all of the committees will be tasked through the council priorities. To be working on the comprehensive plan broadly, that that's a priority of all of theirs. In terms of specific tasks. The next thing that you're going to be reviewing is. Our game plan for how to do exactly that with you all. So. It'll be an ask, but it would come from. You approving an overall approach and then staff would would work with liaison to do the actual work with them.
And on the outreach side of it, are we? Planning to have what we had citizen participation forums, which were facilitated by. I don't know, a professional, I guess.
Yeah, so we heard, I heard that that was a feedback at the last meeting. We think that's excellent. If you're ready to go into that, we had some additional thoughts.
Anything else on this key topic list before we get the update on the outreach? Okay, let's go with outreach.
All right, so we took that idea and we ran with it a little bit, Michael. So here are two. We came up with with sort of a two pronged approach that we would like to recommend. And if you give me one moment, I will pull it up. Come on. Come on, computer. Hold you all in suspense here. Okay. So. This was a sheet that you saw last month. And the red are the proposed. Way to take this in, so. We're suggesting sort of a two or three prong approach and. I'm going to talk about the second two first, then come back to the first one. So. In order to. Both have a specific role and responsibility of the different committees. And to tackle important topics, we're suggesting that. Each of the committees. Standing committees of the city and then also a handful of additional topics that you might identify or might be identified, say. You know, through the Community Justice Center about important topics. Would have a. Facilitated discussion, a panel discussion of those of some community members and larger community members who. Might help frame a subject out. And then a facilitated. Conversation amongst. The community on this topic and it would be all professionally facilitated. The second theme of this would be. That's on topics. To then do neighborhood focused meetings. And I say neighborhood, maybe not by the 25 different neighborhoods that exist in the city, but. Groupings of neighborhoods, the Southeast quadrant, the Chamberlain and. And Country Club Estates area, the Lake Shore area, tho- those kinds of. Areas. And. Have the opportunity to just hear about things and issues and concerns in those areas and. An opportunity for you all to begin to introduce some of the citywide. Subjects that you're thinking about, like, you know, what would it mean to see your neighborhoods begin to allow a little more of. An additional home in the backyard? What, why are we thinking about this? Start this, initiate this conversation in the community. So. Those are the two big ideas that we had and were. On the the third one is the visioning session about a kickoff to all this, that I'm I'm sort of on the fence on whether. A kickoff that is a one big one. Winds up being value added or whether that's just sort of. Adding more to add more when in fact the topic areas are really the topics in the neighborhoods rather than. Hoping that you get a bunch of people to come out on a sunny, you know. Summer night just to kick off a plan, which might be hard. So that was, those were our thoughts, taking your your visioning and running with it to how could this work on a South Burlington scale? And I do have the okay to. Start to. Find a professional facilitator to make this happen.
Oh, good. Is that covered under budget?
Find a way to cover it in the budget. Yes.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yes. Yes, it is covered in the citywide budget of the subject of importance. So, yes.
So Paul, you're not, you're still not sure of the value of the kickoff visioning session is?
I guess I wanted your feedback on it. It's something we could do, you know, in concept, it's a really wonderful idea, but. Do we think that we would actually get? A lot of people or do we just dive right in? After the Joint Planning Commission and Council meeting where you have sort of laid out some big themes. To. You know, dive into the subjects.
It may, it may be worthwhile just to get the public engaged, but it also might identify for us. Individuals. Who from. From neighborhoods. Who would then be. Quite, who would would represent their neighborhood at the at these other meetings? If they come to a visiting session and they express interest. That might give us some. Some personal connections, people who might help us.
There are a lot of sessions here. I'm just, I'm wondering, does anyone here have experience with the 2016? Complan and how well attended those sessions were or not? And how many were there? Was there kind of complan fatigue and? You know, just.
Yes, on the last question, but it was a five year project to get to do that instead of a one year project.
It was huge and long and every single, we rewrote every single. Piece of it. So, so some of those subject area meetings weren't like a public meeting, but it was like a couple. Planning Commission meetings with like just members of the public. weighing in.
Yeah, and that's part of why we're suggesting, at least for the subject area ones, that it be a panel discussion isn't, is so that it's not just. Hey, folks, what are your opinions on affordable housing? Let's, let's try to, you talked a couple of months ago, but how do you start to engage? Excitement on on making progress in this subject. So bringing, having the facility to bring in. A handful of people to have a thoughtful conversation about what does this mean in the next decade? For us, instead of just a sit in a room and listen to people, like have a reason for people to actually want to come out, I guess, is fundamentally.
So we didn't do that. That.
But I, the the visiting sessions. That I have attended in South Burlington. I can't remember exactly what, how many there were, but there were quite a few. One of them was about. The bridge across. I89, it was very well attended.
Right, but that's a specific subject.
But there were others related to the comp plan that I think were well attended as well. But they were well. Or city center, yeah.
Right. And the Southeast quadrant in the prior time before that was absolutely well attended. I think my concern about it, just a general one, is it's. Very hard to get people to be excited to talk about. Other than you all, to get people to talk very broadly about all subjects in the city. That's, that's, that's our struggle and why we thought maybe just driving straight to the. Key subjects would bring people out.
So Paul Engels and then Duncan?
Yep. I have always thought a problem that South Burlington has is that we really don't have a vision. And I think it would be good for us to try to really develop a vision.
Right. And that's the joint meeting of you and council.
Yep, and. With the rezoning task force, I was really skeptical about having public meetings before we really. Had any discussion of anything. I thought this is kind of nonsense. But then when we did it. It really ended up where the public turned out and really drove the direction of the. Task force. So I mean, if we could have that kind of. Thing happen with the complan, that would be tremendous. To do that, you're going to have to really do some publicity and really, you know. Encourage people to turn out and give them really something, you know, that they can get their teeth into, but, you know. It really, it's the first time I've seen it in the city that it's happened that way, that. The public really said, you know, this is who we are, this is what we want and. This is the way we want it to be, you know, it's great. It was really. Pretty amazing to be a part of it.
I would. I would argue the other side that.
I would argue the other side that I, I don't know that the visioning session is going to be, a- again, I think it's going to be really tough to get people to that. And if you're dealing with limited resources and funding, I would, I, I think the neighborhood idea is great. I think that's probably one of the reasons that you had so many people is because it was neighborhood based. I, I think that that's where we're going to get more people. Um, and if it's a question of resources, I would skip the visiting and concentrate on the second two. That would be my.
Do you think, do you think that maybe within those neighborhoods, there could be some overall visioning too? Like maybe it could be like a neighborhood specific plus bigger?
I don't know. I just, um, maybe using the word visioning is, would be the turnoff part of it. I mean, if you just want to open it up to the public and say, you know, this is what we're doing and this is what the comprehensive plan is. And it's this important to the city, tell us what you think and, you know, it could very well happen. It could very well drive us to wherever we go with this, you know?
Um, follow up on Duncan's comment about neighborhoods. You know, people will come out, as Paul saw, um, if it's an issue specifically, but we are, this goes back to the disconnection of our community. You know, what country club estates in Bartlett Bay are doing or Queen City Park. You know, there's no connection there at all. So we really have to feed it, I think, to those, to those areas. I just don't see people from all those neighborhoods coming to a big, so.
And I think that connecting the planning commission, the council on the, you know, the four key vision elements will help frame that conversation for everybody and is a chance to shop it around and give people something to respond to that. Climate change, key goal, uh, connected neighborhoods, key call, uh, equitability, key, key goal. And it gives something for when you go to the neighborhoods to say, whether you live in Bartlett Bay or Cheese Factory Road or East Terrace, this is what we're trying to achieve together, even if, you know, your daily lives don't interact that much. Cause you're right, it's, it's very hard. Great ideas.
Anything else? And, you know, maybe we could even, um, be a little flexible. I mean, if our selected, um, facilitator is really excited about the visioning and can see maybe seeing in other communities of being really important. I mean, maybe that is something to do. Or maybe bring into the neighborhoods like Duncan said, and you know, Paul's experience with the Chamberlain neighborhood is really wanting to respond to their issues.
Get a lot of participation if we send a notice to each community. And, you know, for instance, Queen City Park, we might say, um, we're gonna have a huge venue for, you know, rock bands. And, uh, you know, in a different neighborhood, uh, we're gonna put a, you know, waste treatment plant next to you. So get them really riled up and that'll, that'll get them out to a good.
Hey Paul, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Sue.
One of the things you might want to keep in mind is that your city charter committee is being brought into, to work on possibly establishing voting districts. You might want to integrate that into your plan as well.
Interesting idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Because they will be setting possibly by the same districts that they have set up. Uh, you know, the state has now set up the, the new voting, um, districts for representatives to the state legislature, possibly using that or some other form to elect local officers as well. So you, you might look at those particular divisions as neighborhoods, quote unquote.
Thanks, Sue. Thanks for making that connection. We'll take a look at that.
And point out that I'm, I'm the charter committee.
Yeah, that's what made me think of it. Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm wondering the, um, if we don't have that first visioning section, is it possible? And maybe you alluding to this to have the subject area discussion allow for also more open dialogue and comments, because this should be a place where folks can just come in. And at least at the very beginning, talk kind of unconstrained about how we all think the compliment should look. That, that there should be that opportunity, I think.
You know, the, I think the South Burlington Land Trust was the, uh, very much involved in the previous com plan. And maybe had twenty-five members. They now have a couple of hundred. So I'm, I'm sure we could encourage people to participate um, in a visioning session and maybe the subsequent, uh, subject matter sessions as well.
And the housing people and the development community, there's a lot of people that, that'll turn up for sure.
We'll tune that a little bit.
It's important for us to allow the, the public to drive us, have the planning that we're doing come from the bottom up and not the top down. People are, uh, much more informed than we think they are. And they're all quite frustrated by not being able to have a voice.
Got a good plan forward. Um, so next we have meeting minutes. I know it says May ten and May twenty-four, but we only have May ten. Oh, second, um, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, on favor of the May ten minutes, right? That was unanimous? Oh, did, did you abstain then? Okay, so it was, um, Ted abstained, but the rest of us voted yes. Um, and let's see, other business, any other business? Anything else we missed? Okay. Then, um, we are.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a Lance.
Twenty minutes left.
What did we do?
We did stop. We did stop efficiently.
That twenty minutes isn't going to get us out of the hole.
Actually, I brought all my bike lights and I don't have any.
Go home without them.
Not far, I live on.
Why we live up here, Michael?